All my people here?
There you are.
All right, thank you very much, Andrew. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's planning board meeting. It is November 10th. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General laws, section 40A, and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, section 310, 6 dot 11, and 310, 6 dot 13. A public hearing is being held tonight, Monday, November 10th, 2025, at 7:00. Oh, I'm reading the wrong thing. Back up, start over. We'll just edit this in post, right? Yep, perfect. Okay, so in accordance with the positions of Mass. General laws, chapter 38, section 20, notice is hereby given that the planning board is meeting tonight, Monday, November 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in Town Hall Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this person, attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, or by remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that in the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the remote connection. All right, here with me tonight, I myself am Gary Sullivan, vice chair, acting as chair in absence of Chris Monfort. To my right is Gary Searle. To my left is Melissa Mayo. We have Rich McCarthy, our town planner. We have Betsy Fajola, our ministry assistant. Who else is in the room? Not many people.
Dan Seeger is on.
Dan Seeger is online. Hello, Dan.
Good evening.
Because Dan is online, we do need to do roll call vote for any votes. Yeah, so let's get this started.
So.
What's up first? Public hearing, 7:00 PM, 19 Valley Street?
Yep, the applicant has requested a continuance until our December 9th meeting. They're still addressing all the peer review comments from Beta.
Okay. All right, so I will, do we have to vote on?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll accept a motion to continue the 19 Valley Street public hearing until our December 9th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, we have to go roll call. So we'll start with Dan, Dan Seeger.
Aye.
Gary Searle.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan is aye. Any ayes? No? We're good? Okay. Well, now we have to wait till 7:30.
Right.
So.
But the good news is we can.
Business. New business, 28 Long Meadow?
Yeah, we can go right through the new business portion of your agenda.
Great.
And then hopefully you'll be ready to roll at 7:30.
So is there good news via regarding 28 Long Meadow? Did you say good news? Or was it good news we got to go through this whole list?
No, good news was to be able to go through the.
Okay, that's fine.
New business, not good news for 28 Long Meadow Road. So in terms of 28 Long Meadow Road, I prepared a letter that stated that the planning board voted the director of planning development to be the agent for the planning board as it relates to 28 Long Meadow Road. I then prepared a letter that I sent to the director, the DPW director for the town of Norfolk, who has the enforcement arm under the stormwater bylaw. And that's a really has a practical matter because we don't have a, we have an interim director.
Yep.
And no assistant director, nor do we have a highway superintendent either. That person's has taken a position in another community. I'm not sure how much actual fining will happen until we have kind of solidify that position.
Okay.
But everything is lined up for that to happen. Because you already voted for the fining, as soon as they, if they're able to find, they could send fines, they don't have to be consecutive, they could just send out, send out fines. So every, the table's been set to do that, we just need to have them do that. So I don't believe any has been sent out to date, so.
Okay.
Related to that, in a way, the Conservation Commission really hasn't seen any progress either. They have reached out to the TEP to see if they can step in and use some of their authority as a state agency to move that along. There hasn't been any movement, there hasn't been any further movement yet, so.
Okay.
So not really good news to report on that front.
Okay. Well, we've done everything we can, I think, for that, so hopefully we can iron out the logistics of starting to find properly.
And there's been no interaction? No one's come in from representing 28 Long Meadows since?
Okay, there's been zero.
Okay. Didn't know if someone just went on, but I guess not. Yeah, okay. And once you take steps, you start moving forward, it's not reversible. At some point, you're, you're just marching forward at that point. Okay.
Yeah, it's not reversible. So in terms of finding, it's finding forward.
Yeah.
Not back, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I will try to reach out to the applicant through their legal counsel to see if I could get some.
Yeah.
You know, I did hear from a legal counsel for the owner a while ago, several months ago, but they haven't heard anything since.
Okay. Interesting.
That is. What else do we want to hit?
Minutes?
Yep.
And then master plan implementation and B1 discussion. So that's, that should be a good discussion, I would hope.
Okay.
I like B1.
So the question is which one, what would you like to tackle next?
Let's do the minutes, because that seems to be the lowest hanging fruit.
It's not exciting, but all right.
It's a shoe.
All right.
Do you want to jump in with that, Gary?
Yeah, sure. You want to start with the October 14th ones?
Sure, so I think both the October 14th and 27th minutes have been distributed. We'll start with October 14th. Are there any questions, concerns, or edits with the minutes?
Looks good.
Take the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor of approving the October 14th, 2025 planning board minutes as distributed? Say aye. Do we have to roll call this?
We have to roll call this.
All right, Gary Searle?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
PNC agrees aye. Moving on to October 27th, any questions, concerns, or edits?
No, sir. Not that I hear or see.
All right.
Okay.
Stay motioned.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Gary Searle?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Dan Seeger, what's aye?
Okay, you want to jump to Master Plan Implementation Committee?
So that would, that'll be Melissa and Dan?
Yeah.
Talk about that?
Yep. Dan and I have been working on this. So we moved all of the, you know, the master plan output is, you know, one big PDF. And so we moved that into a spreadsheet so that we could sort it if we need to in different ways, just to kind of see how it makes sense for different owners, or if we need to have almost like subcommittees based on topic. So Dan and I met about that about a little over a week ago now. And what we were trying to figure out is what makes the most sense in terms, there's a lot of information in there, but some of it is more of like the day-to-day. So for us as the planning board, for Rich as the planning director, for DPW and their day-to-day. So what we talked about doing is separating it out so that it's more of, you know, this is your day-to-day as an employee or as a board versus these are the things that we need to work on as a, you know, committee or subcommittees. So we tabled that for now because we had town meeting coming up, and I needed to work on some stuff for that. Dan did put together a one-pager. I don't know, Dan, if you have it readily available to share, but it was just, you know, he put together a one-pager to kind of explain what this, what we're looking for, what it would be, and then the next steps for all of us. What we were thinking is continue to work on this through, you know, the end of the year, Dan and I can work on it together, and then get it kicked off, start getting the people for the committee first, first of the year. So that'll give us some time to all work through it, review the ultimate, you know, the, what we have for items for committees versus employees or boards, just to make sure everybody's in agreement with how we categorize it, and then we can move forward. But Dan did put together a one-pager. If, sorry, Dan, I just put you on the spot with that one, but if you don't have.
That's okay. I'm just, I'm working on, I've got two different devices here, so my technical prowess will probably take me a little bit to try to share this, but maybe what I'd just say briefly is that, you know, as Melissa said, we kind of tried to think about breaking it apart from what are, you know, more policy objectives that are kind of implemented broadly as work is done versus what are the kind of actionable targets or goals or items that come from the actual plan itself. And then we talked about what is the, you know, what is the possibility for it's sort of an implementation committee that doesn't get overly bureaucratic or burdensome, but does, you know, bring in some kind of knowledge and resonance and other views to continue the good work that was done and engagement as part of the development of the master plan itself. So I can. This, it's pretty high level. I think certainly can distribute it to the board and kind of, you know, talk through it once you've had some time to absorb it. But the, the kind of upshot of it is it would put together an implementation advisory committee for implementing the goals of the master plan as well as sort of marketing, monitoring, and sort of understanding the kind of metrics for progress and success of those goals. We, we talked with Rich and Betsy, as well as Carol Green and the Town Clerk's Office to kind of think through what's the most logical way to implement and appoint a committee like that. And what we sort of came to was that have it be a subcommittee of the, the planning board. And so what we kind of started to do here, certainly can take feedback from the board, you know, either now or in between now and the next meeting, but think about who should be sort of the representatives of that committee. We've got a couple of open questions to chase down, whether like sort of how many people could we have from the planning board before we necessarily trigger a specific planning board meeting and stuff like that. But logistically speaking, it would be a, a subcommittee that's kind of reflective of the, the group that worked on and will need to implement the master plan. And then as part of that, if there's specific subject matter areas or topics that kind of need, you know, ad hoc deep dives, that group can sort of assign those off and create sort of ad hoc subject matter, you know, groups to kind of run with something and then come back and report on, on progress. So yeah, that's kind of high level. Again, we're trying to strike the balance between making sure we're doing this transparently and engaging as many people as possible without kind of creating something that's overly burdensome and bureaucratic, so we can actually, you know, focus on implementation.
Yeah, we were thinking, you know, just like with the master plan steering committee, we had our regular folks that were committed, and then so that would be the subcommittee. But then having the ad hoc groups is something that Dan and I talked about as, you know, what I hear from people is oftentimes they don't want to be part of a, a committee or a board because of the time commitment, or because of the unknowns, or because, you know, it's, there's a lot of different reasons. Mostly, I think it comes down to the commitment. And, you know, everybody has busy lives, so if we can have people, that's another reason we talked about breaking it up into topics, because maybe people would be interested in a particular topic in the master plan, but not necessarily all of it. So then maybe we could just have these ad hoc groups of people that are like, oh, I can jump in to help with that one, or give you my feedback, or whatever it may be, without having them be, feel burdened with, you know, a three-year commitment or a 12-month commitment, and just having more ad hoc meetings to get more voices into the process.
How do we get the pool of volunteers for the different groups? Are they already people working on different groups in the town, in different committees?
It could be. I mean, Dan, what you have in your document is really like we would have people that are already part of other committees and boards, right? And then we would have, and that would be our regular standing group, and then we would have ad hoc groups for people that want to jump in and help where they can.
The ad hoc groups, which is a cool idea, I like that. Let's say everybody jumps at this, and there's 100 people that want in, like, do we just go to a lottery system, or is there, like, how do we pick the?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
But that's a, no, it's a good question.
I think we get more things to investigate if you got 100 people that are interested.
I hope we would have that many people interested, but no, we haven't gotten that far yet. We, we just, this, there's a lot to, to break down, but any of the questions that you guys have definitely feed them our way because we need to think through it all.
You know, the groups, I thought that was the case with the, the original B1 committee, right? There was a good mix of people. Different skill sets, different life experience, different ages. But it seemed like that was a good balance.
Yeah.
And maybe it was just lucky at the time that we got a good group of people.
You could always, if you get a run, like, it was a huge turnout, you could always, people could maybe prioritize, but they might be more interested and see how that plans up too.
That was more of a hypothetical, more aligned with what Gary Searle was saying, is the, how do we ensure there's a good mix?
Yeah.
Right, which a lottery wouldn't do.
Right.
Necessarily.
So we had, like, maybe we think about asking for backgrounds, interests, you know, experience. But I think that was part of the B1 thing.
Yeah, it did.
And I, we did not, not at that level, but we did some of that for the, for the master planning committee, right? Because we were looking for, we were looking specifically at age demographics, we were also looking for backgrounds and stuff like that, so. Okay.
Yeah, I think that all makes sense. What I would maybe recommend for next steps on this is we can answer some of the remaining questions that we had in putting this together, and then send something out to, you know, the, the board for review and talk about it at the, the next meeting. And then I think part of that conversation can be about, you know, how we recruit people, you know, how do we potentially see people with different, you know, backgrounds or interests as part of that, and then kind of divide some of this, this step up into implementation.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks for doing this work.
Sure. Kind of couldn't not do it after. How many times did I say this can't just be a pretty document?
Right, yeah.
Exactly. Kind of convince yourself.
I did, yeah.
Okay, so that's it for Master Plan Implementation Committee. We got 10 minutes, give or take. Not enough time for proper B1 conversation, or?
We could certainly start, right? And see what your thoughts are.
Okay, you seem really energized when it came up on the agenda.
Yeah. So what I did was I had a meeting with Juwan Park and actually Josh Fial, and Josh Fial, if you remember, was in, was in the beginning in terms of working on the B1 study when we had the B1 study going on. Alexis is, she's actually leaving MAPC and moving on to another agency. So she, so in, in terms of sitting down and discussing with Juwan, and then Josh was good because Josh kind of provides some context between when we did the B1 study, 2019, a while ago now.
Yeah.
And then he was very involved with the master plan and so forth, and then we kind of talked about where are we gone recently with some, the, the study from MAPC regarding the B1. So what, the thought was that towns, the B1 district itself is not particularly large in scale. So we're not talking about a large geographic area with multiple properties, which of them itself, we have some properties that are vacant, and then we have some that are developed, which might be partially redeveloped, or they could be, if the economics supported, they could be tear downs, redevelopment down the road, depending upon how, how things proceed in terms of the market and so forth, and different situations with the properties. So the thought was, instead of trying to create a set of standards that, you know, might apply well to one site and then another site not so well, and create, but then the idea would be to create, give the planning board, we have some, we have standards already in the B1 district, but through a special permit process, give the planning board the flexibility to modify a site, a project on a site-by-site basis. So that, what that would do is there might be circumstances that fit well in terms of the B1 requirements, but yet in others they may not. So the board would have the flexibility through the special permit process. And part of that process would be essentially like a concept plan that you, an applicant could submit to the board. We'd have a public hearing as part of the process, so it would be public feedback into that and talk about it, just the different standards, whether, you know, setbacks, height, commercial mix, the amount of, the number of units in terms of a project from a dwelling standpoint, the affordability component, so a whole host of different things that you could kind of consensus build what would, what makes sense through a concept plan. And then you would see what the stands, what they meet and they don't meet, and whether it makes sense or not, or maybe there's some give and take, right, in terms of how you shape the project. And then they would come back for a special permit, so it's kind of a step process. And what the, it does create flexibility. It's kind of hard in terms of one size doesn't fit all, and it really works in terms of, you know, an applicant, it can be a little more of a heavy lift for an applicant in terms of applicant or property owner, because, you know, this could be, it could be a little back and forth, right? So this doesn't quite work, you might be spending time kind of getting to that point where you have a consensus plan. But what it does allow them is the ability to kind of approach the board and get the feedback from the board, who will ultimately be the permitting body, and then get public feedback. Instead of sometimes you, you bring a project in, it's a, it could be crap shit, right? You don't know how, how the board, nor the public may react or not, right? So that's, that's kind of the pitch to do it that way, which is more simplified, which, again, you know, there's pros and cons to every solution, but instead of trying to, as you can see, when we started back in 2019, there was a whole series of provisions in the zone that we were looking at to make some changes to. And some did get changed, but not all of them.
Right.
You know, we never really settled on one, on one particular thing. And I highlighted in your, in the shared drive, like, other sections of the B1 that we haven't even touched upon that could come into play too, that, again, would create that flexibility. So that, that's kind of the high-level pitch.
The ultimate goal is to get more development in the B1 district?
Correct.
That's what we're, it's the top of the pyramid.
Top of the pyramid is to get development in the B1 district. So it might, in some cases, you might have a little bit more commercial side of it to the equation, there might be a little bit more residential. But if its idea is to kind of create the balance that's going to work, that we want to have somebody permit a project, design a permit, and fill that space, whether it's commercial, residential, we don't want empty spaces.
We want them to, we want projects to be applicable to our bylaws and not skirt them. Development, but with the, you know.
Within the framework of the bylaw.
Exactly.
Correct. Because it's, as you know, you're going through the process, trying to sit in an auditorium and explain, you know, shade trees and street trees, and then buffers, and then how these things interact, where the utilities are located versus not, and it gets a little bit tricky without something real tangible. So this is a way to kind of marry both in terms of concepts. Now, you know, obviously, there's a lot of faith in the board, but you are elected body. It is a special permit, so you can say no, it's not by right. So there's, there's some built safeguards for the, the community as, as a whole.
The B1 committee looked at ideas like this. We didn't get very far with them because we want to keep it simple, get something out the door that we could iterate on at some point in the future, and that's also why the 40R conversation stopped and things like that. So be great to have it back at the table. I haven't talked about this in so long, though. It's like, I feel like I have to go brush up. I mean, I do think it's, there's, I think the focus for us for the last couple of years has been to try to find ways to compromise with things or developers or the state to find ways to regain some control over things that are being developed in town. This is just a further extension of that, so it makes sense to me.
And so really, what I'm, in terms of asking tonight, is if this concept, you know, has merit and you want to pursue a little bit further, you don't make a decision tonight, but I don't want to necessarily have MAPC going down a track of, you know, one way or the other, actually, and not, you know, come back with something that, you know, the board at least would be considering.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking back to some of the conversations we've had with builders that have come to our meetings that have said they were surprised that we didn't have any flexibility. Right, so I, it's a, it's a tough one, because, you know, people in town want everything to look a certain way, and so the bylaws create that, but it's also restrictive to the folks that want to build on the areas that we want to be built, specifically in the B1. So I think we do have to have, come to some sort of middle ground on how we're going to do this, because if it's too restrictive, then we're not going to have anything built, and folks want things built, and they want it to look the way that they want it to look. But the way that 40B can be, you know, we could just, if we, if we don't do something to try to find a middle ground, we could just have 100% residential downtown, and we won't be able to do anything about it. Right? So I think that's something that's important to note as well to folks.
And the position you're in today is that through that B1, you did create the design guidelines, so.
Sure.
There is a template in place of, you know, how, the idea of how the, the buildings will look, how they're oriented and so forth, so there is a.
Most of the B1 is great. I mean, from what we've heard from developers, it's just a few things that just don't work all the time. So, you know, most of, it's not like it's work that was wasted. You guys put a lot of time and effort into that, and it, it's great. There's only a few things really that come up kind of repeatedly.
Yeah, and.
Why do you think it hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of development then?
Well, I mean.
There's a couple of big things.
The first big thing is that, you know.
What's four? Here we go.
No, no, not necessarily that. I mean, so right off the bat, the economy has changed dramatically since, you know, this, the B1 originally started before COVID, right? So the whole world in terms of how we do things has definitely shifted. I mean, there'll be some shift a little bit back, but that's definitely played a big part. And the other thing that's underlying to a degree limiter is the fact, you know, we don't have sewer.
Yeah.
In town centers. So in terms of, that is definitely a big component of it, because, you know, if you're looking to change out tenants, you know, certain tenants have different septic wastewater requirements than others, so, you know, the buildings that are in, in the center today are on older systems, so, so that definitely plays a part.
The commercial split, we've heard often.
The commercial split is pretty, I will say right off the bat, we know which is definitely a hard stop is the ratio, commercial to residential, because it's based on footprint size. So that, that definitely doesn't work. Maybe it seemed like it worked, but when you actually try to put the boxes on a, on a plan and figure that it doesn't work, you know, so that's clearly been one. Yeah, there is, there's one. Maybe it seemed like it worked, but when you actually try to put the boxes on a, on a plan and figure that it doesn't work, you know? So that's clearly been one. Yeah, there is, there's one potential development that the height is an issue. Well, actually I shouldn't say that. It's not the height, it's the number of stories.
Stories.
The height meets the height, it's just the number of stories. But so there's other, I don't think the height would, it may not be an issue, right? So, and more, you know, depending on the story level, that might not fit every site either, right?
Right. So that's one where it's, it's a very particular lot that does actually kind of go downhill, right? So it's not exceeding the 46 feet, it's just that it's going to be four floors instead of three and a half, right?
Correct.
So it still doesn't exceed the 46 feet, but it's also downhill, so it's going to appear to be shorter than it is versus the lot right across the street from here obviously would, it would look very tall potentially, not, I mean, it's still 46 feet, but you know, it does, it appears to be shorter anyway. That's one where it's almost like double restrictive.
Yeah, no, definitely. And that's a much bigger site too, so in terms of that site. But, so overall, that's, so again, that's, we looked at, you know, not, we looked at a couple of sites, so for instance where, you know, where NCTV is across the street, there's three different buildings on that property. You know, I know from prior discussions, the owners like said that, you know, the sewer is definitely an important part for redevelopment, but some of these other requirements could bump up too for, if they wanted to do some redevelopment and not the whole entire site, right? So for instance, the hardware store, you know, it's in the back of the property, doesn't really, that doesn't really work necessarily what we're trying to achieve in the center of town. But maybe they put all residential building because they already have commercial on the site, or maybe there's some, you know what I mean? So it creates a flex, so that's the whole notion.
That was another one that came up, right? The mixed use has to be in the same building.
Same building.
Instead of being able to separate residential from commercial, which could work on certain lots.
And then even the location, because I think of 15, not 15 Rockwood Road, but, well, 16, whatever where the liquor store is, like that building, you know, sits up on Rockwood Road, but down the back, you might have a mix where you could have commercial, commercial, residential, or you might have residential, commercial, you know what I mean? So there's flexibility there, but the bylaw is pretty restrictive on how you go about doing it. So anyway, that's the, that's the takeaway. So is that something you at least would want to consider?
I would, yeah.
I think we, we should. I think we're going to have to, to be able to have those conversations with the developers that we really truly want to be able to build something that folks in town want here. I think we'll probably have to have some examples to show, you know, like the one, the perfect example, 46 feet, it meets 46 feet, but it's also going to be four stories, which is not allowed, but it doesn't change necessarily anything from the outside. So if we could have some examples, I think that would be helpful, because otherwise it might seem like you're giving all of the control for anything that's built, you know, especially in the center of town where a lot of people care about it and what it looks like, giving that control to a bunch of people that perhaps you've never met, as much as we are, you know, out there and try to meet as many people as possible. But for folks that don't know us well, or when we switch off onto, you know, go to other boards or our time's up, terms are up, you know, I think it's putting a lot of faith into potentially future people that you don't know.
Definitely true. But we would definitely include the public in the process at the site level, which I think is really be important too. Dan, is that?
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. I mean, I think the, the concept is right, we need to make sure that we put the right guardrails in place so it doesn't turn into a blank check for anybody. But I think that, you know, the ability to make common sense adjustments to help revitalize whatever we can and gain local control over whatever we can, I'm all for.
I'll give them some, we gotta get back to 7:30.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for that, Rich. Okay, so now we have a 7:30 public hearing for 50 Fruit Street. Are the two, are these two, two separate public hearings or the same?
Yep, so you can, the stormwater management permit is continued from our October meeting, so we can, we can discuss that and then we can open up the Scenic Roads Act hearing.
Okay.
Sure.
So let's start with stormwater management permit first. Is there anything, is there any formality or reopen that? I don't pay enough attention to these meetings.
I'm reading a notice.
No, no, there's no notice.
No, there's no notice because it's just a continuance.
No, you could just.
Afterwards, he will.
Yeah. Okay. Which I'll waive because I don't like long sentences or anything.
Okay. But stormwater's already open.
Yeah, all right. We have, so online, Dan American, American Engineering is, hey, Dan.
Good evening. Can I share my screen?
Absolutely, let me make a call, Dan. All set.
Thank you. Okay, Dan American, Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. When we met last, we were just basically awaiting the peer review, so we did receive the peer review comments. We provided a revised site plan, mostly minor details, spot elevations, a few changes to some of the stormwater management details. One of the infiltration systems moved a few feet. Not, nothing really substantive. The other thing, our neighbor at 46 Fruit Street did attend at the last meeting and I told you that I would meet with him and I did, and he requested that we provide a diversion swale. So we added this here because he has, I think you might recall that right now water comes down the road and in the existing condition goes into the existing driveway and kind of goes through here into his backyard. When we relocate the driveway, that's going to address that problem. But he was also concerned that overland runoff just from our lot heading towards his backyard could be an issue. So we added a small swale here that would basically pick up all this overland runoff and divert it behind his property. So it's not a problem for us and easy, easy to accomplish. And that's about it. Any questions you have, happy to answer.
Beta did perform the peer review and everything's in order. Steve and Lee is online with you, with you all if you had any questions, but.
Steve, does anything jump out at you here that we, we should either have more information about or, or, you know, think, think longer about?
Good evening, hi everyone. Steve Lee again with Beta. No, I, we went through the, the initial peer review, the comments were pretty minor. And we since reviewed the submitted material and they've complied with all of the items we had. Again, there was nothing major and then the addition of the swale only improves things for the butters. So as far as we're concerned, everything is all set.
Great, thank you. Rich, there were no other butters that had issues, right?
No. Just the clear.
No, I don't think so.
You're probably, I'm presuming they're satisfied, they're not online tonight, but I'm presuming they're satisfied with the meeting on site and how it's being addressed by the owner.
Yeah, that looks like it should solve the problem.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to work with them if they have other questions or concerns.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have any other questions?
No questions, just thank you for working with the neighbors.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So we close the public hearing? If there's no, I'll, I'll open up the public comment first if anybody has anything to add from outside the planning board, more than happy to hear. Not seeing anything.
I'm not seeing anything either.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so roll call vote, Dan Seeger.
Aye.
Gary Searle.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye. Stormwater management permit for 50 Fruit Street, public hearing is closed.
Now, yeah, the seating.
Now we have to open public hearing for 50 Fruit Street for Scenic Roads Act to remove the 35-foot section of stone wall for proposed driveway. I'll accept a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote for this, Dan Seeger.
Aye.
Gary Searle.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye. Passes unanimously, we are waiving the reading of the public notice. So what is this?
Moving the driveway, right?
Oh, right, 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 right.
This is a request to relocate the driveway. You can see here, this is the existing condition. There is a driveway here with an existing gap in the stone wall that's 38 feet wide. The applicant would like to relocate the driveway further up the road. So we would create a gap further up the road that's the same width, 38 feet. And then we would take the stone materials from that and use it to rebuild the stone wall where the existing driveway is. And as I mentioned, this is the issue the neighbor has with the drainage.
Yep.
Where the water comes down from street and goes into our driveway mouth and then goes across the site into their backyard. So when we close that up, they basically force the water to go down into this catch basin, which runs further down the street into another catch basin further down, and then it discharges into a wetland that's down slope of the neighbor's property. Basically an even swap of the existing opening for a new opening in a different location.
Yep, this makes sense. I always enjoy the Scenic Roads Act, but it is very, sometimes just silly.
Well, because, yeah, taking from one, putting it in another, it does seem a little silly, but it does make sure the roads look the way that folks want them to.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments on this one from the planning board?
No.
No, very straightforward.
Very straightforward. Dan, any comments, concerns?
Questions?
Questions?
No.
No, okay. Anybody from the, we'll open it up to public if anybody has anything they want to add, questions, concerns, comments? Not seeing anything.
I see nothing.
All right, it's pretty straightforward, thanks for being concise with that and rebuilding part of the wall, which is awesome. Or, you're moving the wall, which is great. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing for 50 Fruit Street, Scenic Roads Act.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Dan Seeger.
Aye.
Gary Searle.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye, public hearing is closed. Do we have to vote on?
You do have to vote. Yes, we have them.
Do it tonight?
That would be.
That would be great.
That would be great. Get them.
And we have to vote for them separate because there are two public hearings?
Yes, please.
Yep, okay. Do we need any discussion on this or can we go straight to voting?
We can review the.
Yeah, right.
Stormwater management permit, you've got a copy of that, I think we've reviewed that.
Decision for storm.
You have a copy in your pack of the written decision, Dan, and Dan, you see it in the share drive?
Yeah, I got it open.
Likewise for the Scenic Road, you have a hard copy, then Dan has.
I might not be missing it, I might just be out of the right page. Conditions, okay, conditions are reversible.
It's 38 feet, right, of the stone section of the wall that will be moved?
38. 38 for 38.
The, the condition that you have here in this document for the decision for the wall alteration, it says the DPW will oversee the removal of the stone wall. What, what does that mean? Do they have to be on site to watch it or do they just need to make sure that it gets back, put together?
They'll inspect it after.
Oh, okay.
After the work is done.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Well, hopefully, yeah. But they're not really, they're not overseeing in terms of, as if it was a DPW project, is that the word that oversees, maybe imply that what you're thinking?
Yes, yeah, I didn't know if we were going to have, or just replacing the stone wall or remove and replace, something that says it will, I mean, it does kind of say that in the previous decision. Yeah, so conditions number seven right here, it says the Department of Public Works shall oversee the removal of the stone wall. I just want to make sure we're clear on that so that, you know, if they're just inspecting it after.
DPW shall oversee the work?
Or approve or something, just so it doesn't seem like they need to be standing there while they do the work.
Usually use oversee for this stuff.
Oversee? Is that removal and replace or?
I, that's, that's the part that I, yeah, we could probably be more explicit with that if we feel it's necessary.
Removal slash replacement?
Yeah.
It's relocation.
Relocation.
Yep, relocation, that's perfect.
One word answer.
Perfect.
Relocation, there you go.
So essentially that just means they're going to go out there and make sure it's been done, right?
Yep.
Low effort.
And then, probably the same for the police department too. Maybe I would say must be notified prior.
It says where, okay, where appropriate must be notified prior to the removal. How about the relocation of the stone wall?
Yeah, I think we'll just swap out removal for relocation there.
I can make those changes tonight before you guys go and have maybe Gary sign it.
Okay. There's probably a strong chance, a little detail on that job.
Oh, because it's so narrow there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so hearing no further discussion on the stormwater management permit, we can, I'll accept the motion to approve the conditions of approval for 50 Fruit Street stormwater management permit.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. Roll call vote for this one, Dan Seeger.
Aye.
Gary Searle.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye. So that is approved. And then are we happy with the verbiage edits for the?
The wall alteration?
Yeah. You are with the swapping out.
Removal with relocation.
Removal of relocation in two spots, right?
Yep, you can vote it as, you can vote it as amended.
Okay. And so just to be clear, the three spots are, under the actual condition, the Department of Public Works shall oversee the replacement of the stone wall. And then two sentences down, a director of public works must be notified prior to replacement of the stone wall.
Relocation.
Sorry, relocation of the stone wall. Relocation of the stone wall.
And then under, police department shall be notified.
For potential detail.
During the relocation.
During the relocation. It's a replacement, relocation, relocation. Any further discussion on this one?
No.
You're excellent wordsmiths, so this is always great to see us in action here. Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the decision for stone wall altercation concerning Scenic Roads Act 50 Fruit Street.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Yeah?
Excellent, nice.
Excellent, okay. Roll call vote, Dan Seeger?
Aye.
Gary Searle?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye, passes unanimously. Okay. So that's it for 50 Fruit Street.
Yep.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, so now we jump to our 7:45 public hearing for 100 R. Pond Street Wireless Communications Facility Site Plan. Do we need to open this one?
You do, and there's a notice of public hearing if you'd like to waive the reading.
I'll make a motion, or I'll accept a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing for this one.
So moved.
So, a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote for this one. Dan Seeger?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Searle?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye as well. Public hearing reading has been waived. Okay.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ed Perry, I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick. And thank you for waiving the reading, save us all some time. I thought I was in a vortex, it's been 10 past 10, five past 10 since I got here and I've been.
It's a decoration.
Yeah.
Keep forgetting about that clock.
So I'm here this evening representing SBA Towers and AT&amp;T. And if I could share my screen, I have a little bit of a presentation.
Absolutely.
Okay, you'll be good to go, Ed.
Thank you. There we go. We good?
We see it up here, yep.
Terrific. So as I said, I'm here representing SBA and AT&amp;T. SBA owns, actually, the two towers that are currently located at 100 R. Pond Street. Those are both what we call guy towers, so they're big, tall towers, not much of a foundation. The towers could support AT&amp;T's installation. As I mentioned in my application materials, neither of those two carriers can upgrade, so they're dealing with old equipment, not providing great service, and so we came up with the brilliant idea to do what we call a drop and swap, or in this instance, a drop and swaps, because we'll actually remove the two existing towers. On the screen is just a list of the folks that are here on board, online on Zoom, if you have any particular questions. Rafaela Cardona is representing SBA. Martin Lavine is from C Squared, who did the radio frequency engineering. And we also have a PE with us from Kimley Horn. So what you're seeing now is the ASBIL survey. Those two triangular-looking things are the existing guy towers. As I said, they're just skinny towers sitting on foundations with those three guy wires coming off each. As we go through, I'll just explain what we're proposing to do. That little red box there is where we're gonna bump out the fence compound and build a new monopole. If, in fact, it gets approved by this board and the zoning board of appeals.
So you're dropping the current tower?
We're gonna take both of them out, actually.
You're taking both towers out, okay.
As I mentioned, the tower here on the right or to the east contains the two carriers. Is my little arrow going?
Yep, I see it.
So that's where Verizon and Dish are located. We're shifting the tower, we're not shifting it, we're gonna take that tower down once the new one is built. It'll be a new monopole, so it can accommodate AT&amp;T, Verizon, uh, AT&amp;T, Dish, and T-Mobile. And then the tower to the west we'll also take down, there are no existing carriers on that. The nice thing about the project here is that Dish and T-Mobile can leave their ground-based equipment in place. AT&amp;T can use an existing concrete pad that is already located in the compound. And basically, we're just taking the existing tower, shifting it over about 25 feet or so.
And the monopole, do those also have the guy wires?
They do not, so that's the nice thing about this, a modern, you know, more moderned tower facility rather than have the guy wires or that kind of erector set type. As a matter of fact, I think the Norfolk zoning bylaw requires monopoles, if we use them at all. So this is, this is a large site plan of the compound. This here on the right-hand side is what's existing. Again, the existing tower, it's about 218 feet tall. It's located here, that'll get removed. And then this round circle here is the depiction of the monopole where that'll be located. So it's about a 25-foot shift. AT&amp;T will install its equipment cabinets here with its backup power generator. This is the monopole, as you'll see, there's no guy wires. AT&amp;T would be at the top, T-Mobile, then Dish, and then there would be room for a future co-locator.
And the height on this is?
180 feet, so it's about 36, 37 feet lower. There is a, I think it's a four-foot lightning rod, but it's not really visible. It's a, it's a narrow lightning rod that attaches to the top of every monopole. You probably just don't see them as you drive by. We're gonna go with the stockade fence, wood fence that we already have, we'll expand it. I think it's about, I think we do about a 33-foot expansion of the compound to accommodate the monopole. Just, this is just a picture of the two existing towers. This one here, as I mentioned, does not have any carriers on it. This has T-Mobile and Dish, both of these will come down. And just a close-up, so you can see the antennas of the, of the carriers and the compound. I think there's a lot of work going on up there with the solar farm, et cetera.
Pretty bad view.
Yeah.
So the site's in the commercial zoning district, it's in the Communications Overlay District 4. It's about 8.43 acres, as I mentioned, with the solar project going on. There are two non-conforming guy towers because monopoles are not required, so they're non-conforming. The existing one that we'll remove is 217 feet. We'll push Dish, I should say Verizon, I should say T-Mobile and Dish over to the new tower. It'll be 180-foot poles, so it'll actually be lower, lowering the visibility. It doesn't have to be lit, neither of the two towers right now are lit. This one won't either. We can go up to at least 200 feet. And as I mentioned, we'll be bumping out the fence compound by about 33 feet. And while we have to go to zoning for the use, the planning board might just want to see what AT&amp;T's network looks like. So these are all of the AT&amp;C sites in the area. Where all of those arrows, those blue arrows come in is the proposed location. I think we're about 1.3 miles from our closest site. So AT&amp;T clearly has a gap in coverage, as you'll see here. This is this blue star here, I better get my glasses for this. This blue star here labeled MA 1829 is AT&amp;T's site. We would, you know, drive to get green coverage if we could. Orange is, is adequate coverage, but if we could get green coverage everywhere, everybody would be covered with high-speed data service. So this is AT&amp;T's existing footprint. And I'm gonna flick to the next one, you'll see that it lights up lots of green and orange. So we'll get good coverage throughout this area. AT&amp;T also provides first net service for our first responders. I think the Norfolk Fire Department and I think the County Public Safety, Abrams Corps also. I think it's a Metacomit.
Metacomit, yeah.
These are just some statistics that we put in the application materials. At the orange signal level, which we call neg 93, we'd pick up 1,300 people, additional people in the, in the town of Norfolk who are living there. We also will cover about 15.6 more miles of, of roadways. So bottom line is, we're taking a site that has two kind of old-school guy towers, which aren't even allowed any longer, at least in Norfolk. We'll take them out, we'll replace them with a new modern 880-foot pole. It'll give flexibility for anybody else that wants to co-locate. We'll move Verizon, we'll move T-Mobile and Dish over, we'll attach AT&amp;T, and we'll be done with the project.
So no impact, no negative impact of current T-Mobile or Dish users, but an increase in service for AT&amp;T users?
They will be. And, and T-Mobile will actually improve because they'll put newer equipment on, on the new pole, they can expand and put full antenna arrays. The way we're gonna sequence, we've located the monopole, so we can construct the monopole, get AT&amp;T on board, and then we can move over. T-Mobile and Dish, they can do it, you know, simultaneously, so they can maintain service throughout the time, so. Really not a much of an impact on site plan. I know we need a special permit from the zoning board, but we're not adding impervious surface or, we're using existing roadways, et cetera. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What's the special permit required from ZBA for?
Yeah.
The use. The use, okay, okay. But it's already being used for this?
It's considered a new application.
Okay, okay.
It is a little quirky.
And it's in the Wireless Overlay District.
It's in the Wireless Overlay, I checked that last time. Anybody have questions?
I have two quick questions, all right. Just to confirm, so what you're saying is that they, they won't need aviation lighting because the new tower will be under 200 feet?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any, you know, near-term or midterm or any other plans for any additional towers on the site once you've taken the two down?
No, this would, I mean, this would provide, you know, capacity for someone else that would come along if Verizon happened to come along. I mean, those are the four major providers. But if any other service entity came along, they could, you know, certainly use the monopole.
Are there no other plans for any other towers on the site?
None.
Once the two are taken down?
Correct, they're out, none.
Thanks.
Yep.
This isn't gonna be one of those terrible monopoles that are trying to look like a tree, right?
It will not, it will not.
Have you seen those?
No.
They're huge in your handshake. They look ridiculous. It's like.
We try to talk people out of them, but.
Okay.
A for effort.
I guess we'll open it up to public, right? Yeah? If there's anybody.
Donna's ready.
Donna?
Donna Jones, North Street. The picture that I see now off to the left is a water tower, town water tower, and our MEK Communication and Police Station. How far is the base of the monopole from the water tower? That's a question, then I have a second.
I don't know if I wanna have a specific answer, but I can give you at least.
100 feet.
At least 200?
Oh, definitely.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about it.
So can you, can you see the map, can you see the map on the screen right now? So I'm gonna show you this.
I have site plan.
This, 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 uh, this distance here, it's line B.
Okay.
That is 194 feet from the tower.
Oh, yeah.
So if you're talking about.
And that's just to the property line?
That's to the property line.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I don't have the.
So down at the bottom left, there's a circle which I assume is the water tower.
This is the water tower.
Bottom left.
Bottom left.
Okay.
And it's almost 200 feet to the.
To this line here.
To the property line.
Okay.
I don't know where the police station is, is that just south of?
It's off the, to the bottom left.
Let me see if I can get.
But, so.
I do have Google Earth in.
I wanted to verify that, it is very unlikely that if your monopole pole fell, it would fall onto the water tower.
Oh, without question. Well, the pole is 180 feet and we're at least, or 194 feet from the property line itself, and we're required to be one times the height of the tower, so.
Okay. And about, probably going to get new police radios. And I just wanted to make sure that the tower didn't interfere with police, fire, dispatch communications.
Yeah, it will not, I expect the zoning board will either condition it that way. The FCC doesn't allow us to interfere, and we work with public safety all the time, so it's, interference with public safety is not an issue. We will not interfere with them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. I see Peter Diamond, your hand's up, go ahead.
Just for clarification, there's only gonna be one monopole once you take down the two? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, Peter, yep.
What is the diameter of the monopole at the base as it rises up, it probably tapers?
Yeah, it, it does taper. Zach, are you, are you on, and do you know the answer to that?
I do see Zach on.
I just, let me stop sharing and see what I've got here.
I don't think you showed any pictures of what an actual monopole you might have at another site.
No, he didn't. He's looking up some stuff right now.
I'm just looking to see if. Can we let Zach Medoff from Kimley Horn into the meeting?
He's on right now, it looks like he's muted. Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Zach.
Hello.
Quick introduction.
Hello. Fantastic, hi. My name's Zach Medoff, I'm a licensed professional engineer in Massachusetts, have close to 20 years of experience in telecom structural engineering. You're correct, sir, this will be a tapered monopole. The base of a 180-foot pole's gonna be about six feet.
Thank you, and so it's a solid monopole, there's, I'm asking these questions because there's a solar field there, and I'm just curious on the the shadowing effect.
Yes, it is a tubular pole. I also work in the, the solar industry, as it happens. I can tell you those, those arrays will see zero impact from this structure and, in fact, less overall impact from what they are currently seeing from the two existing towers.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Any other questions? Seeing none?
It's like a hand up. Who's Ed?
Ed is here.
I think that is, that's, yeah. That happened last meeting, too.
Yes.
Andrew! Okay. So what are we looking for out of this?
At this point, just close the hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing for 100 R. Pond Street Wireless Communications Facility Site Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Dan Seeger?
Aye.
Melissa Mayo?
Aye.
Gary Searle?
Aye.
Gary Sullivan votes aye. It is unanimous.
We'll have a decision to do at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Town planner updates, if there are any.
Yeah, there is.
Are you sure?
I forgot to, well, that's fine. Mr. Garolopoulos, he left, so I was gonna say why he was here.
Thought he was here for Pond, no, for.
Well, he was, but he's also a co-owner of. The golf station address, I don't know.
242.
242 Dedham Street.
Yeah.
If you remember a while back when H. Sharonav, I think it was H. Sharonav, was approved. I asked them if they would consider lowering the exit sign?
Yes.
For the drive-through?
Yeah.
And they did, so I just want to give them credit, they did. Pleasant, good experience of not being my, my site cut off, so you get a chance to drive, you can see it, actually.
I was there today and I didn't even notice it, but I bet you, I don't look when I exit, I just kinda go right out, so next time I'll stop and.
So next time, I'll next time you'll be able to see.
So the difference, though, is that you're a very tall man in a truck. So. So my car is the same height as yours, but I'm significantly shorter than you, so it impacts me, probably not you. But I will check it out tomorrow.
Yes. So now, if you drive by, even in a regular automobile, you know, not regular, but an automobile, not SUV?
Yeah.
You'll have clear line of sight.
Oh, that's great.
Right?
So I thought that was good, right? Share that?
That was nice.
Kind of a nice thing. And then, I don't know if we really need to talk about town meeting, but you have to flip a coin, I guess, but...
Who's doing what?
Who's doing what?
Are we both doing?
You did all the work, I think. You actually did the presentation.
When I did all the work, so I have to also do the presentation?
What did I do last time? MBTA, you talk too, though. Damn. It's just really Melissa and I giving all these presentations.
We're so much... Well, no, unless you want to pitch it to Dan, but you were kind of part of the authorship.
Yeah, 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 no, it's fine.
No, it's fine, we'll figure it out. Both, either of us could do it.
Yeah, we'll both be ready for it, and then we'll flip a coin. I'm sure, I just, every time I get up there, I just want to be like, in my Troy McClure voice from The Simpsons, like, "Hi, I'm Troy McClure. You might remember me from such things as B1 zoning and MBTA overlay."
Oh, wow, there you go. Punches up a little bit nicely.
Especially, we're always at the end, you should definitely do that.
All right, excellent.
As you know, that you discussed at your October 27th meeting, the moderator, town clerk, so forth, knows that you're going to be requesting a substitute motion to a print.
Is that substitute motion or friendly?
Substitute motion, yeah.
Okay.
So one of you, one of you planning board members will have to...
Substitute, what?
So the current motion is the IP, so we're going to do a substitute motion to vote it as written?
For both articles.
That's what you sent out. I think that's what you sent out.
Yeah.
We have an email with the language.
The language you wanted us to say. Yeah.
Okay.
Just a reminder, you need to do that. And that was it.
So after the presentation?
Well, no.
Before?
Because the, before the, before the presentation's done, the motion is going to be brought by advisory, right? And we're going to get up after that, and we're going to make the substitute motion. Or does Jay usually do the presentations first, and then the motion, now I'm forgetting? But I think it's the, we'll have to speak to Jay, but I think you probably have to do your motion first.
But they know, it's not... They know, they know, yeah. We'll ask him for town meeting, but what the order is, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a new one.
For us.
For us, yes.
No, we did this. Which one did we? Didn't work in our favor at the end, but we did this a couple of years ago. There was a, there was an IP motion that we got up to.
Okay. That's a good word for it, but that's...
Maybe, maybe I'm thinking of some other group. I'm involved in a lot of groups.
All right, so substitute motion, thank you for the reminder.
No, no. I don't have anything to report on Shire, even though it's there.
Okay.
And that's a...
So we just have to go through our meeting schedule? We're all good with Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Second Tuesday every month?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah.
Kind of built the rest of my schedule around it, so...
Yeah, me too.
Why did you say that? Was there something on here about the schedule?
Yeah, I just said 2025 meeting schedule typically second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, gotcha, okay.
Our next one will be the ninth, which I believe works for everybody.
So we'll put that, give you that date. Your calendar?
The ninth is also still the Medway Branch workshop?
Oh, yes, that's good. Jeez, I should have, unanticipated business.
And that starts before the meeting, right?
So that's 6:00 PM, yes, here, 124, Room 124, Town Hall. And there'll be a workshop at the Counts on Aging. Oh, boy. Have to look at my email to see what I said. Put my email and share it on? I might have to look, hold on a second. And it's going to go out in the December newsletter, News from the Branch meeting.
Great.
Sorry, the newsletter is called News from the Branch?
I believe so, that's the title, right?
That's pretty good. I like that. It's catchy.
Yeah, it's catchy.
It's to be the Silver Site, is that?
Yeah.
I like News from the Branch.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so let's see. And then on December 3rd, I'll be at the Rivers Edge Community Center to make a presentation.
What time's that at?
10:00 AM.
I'm not even up yet. I'll try to make it.
Okay.
You're at the Senior Center on December 3rd at 10?
December 3rd is Rivers Edge.
Rivers Edge. December 1st, then I'm at Senior Center on December 1st at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Hold on. That's not true.
He's lying.
Okay. All right, let me just check the, just wait a second. Ah. It's the same day, December 9th at 11:00 AM.
At the Senior Center.
Yeah. I don't believe, oh, no, actually, you might get a newsletter, I mean...
I do get the Gazette, I used to get the Gazette.
No, no, News from the Branches, I mean, you do qualify and...
I do know, I just haven't seen that...
The newsletter?
I'm going to get one, Special Delivery.
Oh, excellent, look at this. Special Delivery.
newsletters.
I have not noticed the News from the Branch, but, you know, I have qualified to receive this, and I have received this for many years now.
Disclosure age, but, yes. So anyway, December 9th.
Okay, so December 9th is the Senior Center, December 3rd is Rivers Edge. And for anybody wondering what we're talking about, it would be the multimodal path, right?
It's the shared-use path along Medway Branch, which is the former Medway Branch rail line, which right now consists of Medway Branch roadway.
Mm-hmm.
And the Medway Branch shared-use path will go, if it achieves its full completion from beginning to end, it'll go from Town Center at the MBTA commuter rail station out to Dean Street. And then, and then a future, and then part of that would be a, then there could be spurs off of it, but a connection Rivers Edge, and then...
Goes through Town Woods.
Yeah.
All the way to get to Dean Street, okay.
Right. So...
Also exciting because it's part of our master plan, so we're, you know, it's baby steps, it's a small little step, but we're connecting one point to another, and that's what we, you know, folks in town wanted in the absence of space to have sidewalks.
Yes. So it's, and we'll kind of talk about the span of the...
How does the word get out? How do, how do, there are obviously five houses that you definitely want to show up, but aside from that, how does the word get out to come to these meetings?
Five houses?
You know, it's different locations. How do people know to show up? There's advertising in?
It'll be on the newsletter, we'll put it out on Facebook. I sent a letter, individual letter, to each of the home property owners along Medway Branch.
Okay.
So they receive that in the mail.
Good.
In fact, I got a phone call and email from a couple of them already.
Good.
So...
And then we could share it on the other pages, too, just...
Yeah, we can put it out to...
You'll put, well, it'll be on the Town of Norfolk one, but then if any of us see it, we can...
Right, but put it on the community.
Yeah.
The Norfolk community.
And when you talk, you're talking about the whole project, start to finish it all just the first phase, or just the design portion of it?
It's really, it will be, it'll include the whole project. Probably be a little bit more focused on the, what I call the first phase, which is Barnstable Road to Tucker Road.
Yeah.
We have some visuals that we could show?
Yeah.
We had, so you had maps before showing it going through?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I need...
The map is helpful.
The maps I have already, I need to do a little, little sprucing up, kind of.
I feel like I saw a visual at some point showing what it would look like, with like that kind of like barrier.
Like a cross-section?
Yeah, we have, we have cross-section that we could have as a visual. But I want to supplement it a little more. It's a little bit...
Yeah, and when you talked about that, I thought you described it as a 10-foot wide path at one time that runs, and then knowing that there's only one path that goes by the transfer station and the DPW, it's that raised trail when you go into Town Woods?
Yeah, when you go into Town Woods, yes, exactly.
Is that going to be done over in some way along the top?
Yeah. The ultimate plan would be to have it so it'd be an accessible surface, you know...
It might even be widened, because I'm not actually sure that that's 10 feet.
No.
Plus, there's a lot of encroachment from...
The typical, the typical is a 10-foot wide shared-use path.
So...
That's a little bit more, that would certainly be more involved, because it's a little tight design, engineering-wise, you know, but yes, it would be. In terms of phases, we're looking at, Phase 1 is, as I said, Barnstable to Tucker Road, because there's no sidewalk there now. So the objective is, we applied for Complete Streets grant money to build that first phase. So if we reward the money, that gets built, which is the 10-foot wide shared-use path, separated from the road. And then we would, ultimately, I like to say, will be Phase 2, is look at going from the DPW transfer station outward. Then we might do Tucker Road to Boardman as part of that Phase 2, like two pieces of it as Phase 2. The last phase, because it would involve the MBTA, would be going from Boardman Street to the commuter rail station.
Nice.
So...
Very nice, yeah.
You know?
It's a good start.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a good, yeah, it's a good start. So at minimum, then, if this gets approved, then at least you have sidewalk from Barnstable Road all the way down to Boardman Street contiguous, so... And I think, I'm excited to go to the Senior Center, I think, you know, talk to them about this project, walking groups, you know, the whole, I mean, just, you know...
Yeah, when we were, during the master plan process, I think you and I were at, maybe it was Rivers Edge?
It was Rivers Edge, yeah.
And they were talking, they really wanted to be able to walk more safely, and, you know, sidewalks, of course, which...
Right. So, I mean, this, this does, I mean, if we were able to accomplish this, then it gives them a connection to the Senior Center, on to Town Center, and not have to, have a pleasant walking experience at that.
Right, that's nice.
You know, yeah. So that's pretty exciting, so we have that all teed up.
It's not as good as a monorail, but it's pretty good.
That was, who was it? That was a year or so ago, there was someone who was going to do demos with the little thing that went up in the air.
Yeah, the Podway?
Podway, is that what it was called?
Yeah.
Down at Shire Drive.
Yeah.
That was up there, is it still up there for, there was like a little...
Yeah, it's still up there, I don't know if it's taken off.
We're still waiting for the first buyer.
Yeah, that was, that was for it.
Yeah.
Second Simpsons reference.
So you got all that, Dan, right?
Got it. Right, I'm clear.
We don't need any additional parking to support this, do we?
Excellent. Well, no, I mean, I followed your suggestions, so...
Yeah, you can walk from the Senior Center to the new coffee shop, that's delicious, that's where Dan and I had our meeting about the master plan.
Yeah.
It's really good.
Coffee shop?
Organic buzzies.
Yeah, it's good.
Twice upon its cost.
I have done, Patsy, you gotta go.
Weird hours.
I ran, they do, but I ran up, they close at 3:00, I ran up there right before they closed, I got a couple of, oh, I thought it was 3:00.
I think it's 4:00.
But I got a couple of shots of espresso that were excellent, and I saved some, I made espresso martinis out of them the next night.
Really? And the people are so friendly, they're very chipper, very early in the morning.
Is it the busy bean? Is that, is that something like that?
Honey, it's a honey, honey bean.
Honey bean, okay.
It could be busy.
If we got there before it closed.
Yeah, sounds pretty exciting.
I think it's a coffee's exciting, obviously. Coffee's always exciting, but pathing is also...